Yep. Well, Mr. Chair, wait, 7:02. We have a quorum. You can get us started.
All right. Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the April 8th, 2021, meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission to order and get a roll call for who's present, please.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Here.
Robert Cherry.
Here.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Gina Morris. Nice heart. Gina. Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Jeffrey Musall.
Here.
Gina Morris. Okay. Okay, Chair. Oh, Colin Bullock.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, Chair.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for any public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone waiting or anyone wanting to make a comment?
There's no one in the waiting room, so everybody here is here.
Everybody here is here. Okay.
Everybody we see is here, so.
There is there, Mr. Chair.
That's good. You going Dr. Seuss on us this evening?
I might, I might.
So, all right, moving on to the consent calendar and the minutes from our March meeting. Is there any commissioners that would like to make any comments or anything to address on that before we move on? Hearing none. Do we have a motion related to the minutes?
Planning Commissioner Wright moved to accept Planning Commission for meeting minutes for March 11th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote?
Do you want a verbal vote?
Yeah, why don't we, since we're on the video, it helps.
Okay, thank you. Jason Dale.
Hi.
Robert Cherry.
Hi.
Charles Aben.
Hi.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion to approve the minutes is approved. So, moving on, and our first item of business, it looks like, is a quasi judicial public hearing. So, this time, we'd like to, I'd like to open the hearing, and the purpose is to discuss the Peterson Annex on 700 Northeast Camellia Drive. And I don't, at this time, I'd like to ask any extensions, any biases to report, any ex parte contact, or any objections to jurisdiction.
Chairman, I want to admit that I used Google Earth to actually find where that property was, because I had no clue.
Okay, so noted for the record. Anyone else? Hearing nothing else at this time, let's turn the meeting over to staff for the staff report.
Mr. Chair, first of all, we need to have Mr. Bullock read the legal language prior to the hearing.
Mr. Bullock, read their language, please.
Everybody's favorite part. ORS 197.763 requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal, this case, the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the quote "raise it or waive it" end quote requirement. If you not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an actions for damage, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on the application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Colin. And I'd also like to add the testimony procedure. If any proponents are here to testify, they would go first, then the opponents are undecided, and then we can also open the floor up for rebuttal. So, if there, that, we will address that after the staff report, and go ahead and open it up for the staff report now.
So, Mr. Davenport will provide the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Patrick Davenport, Planning Manager for City of Newburgh. And I believe Robin is going to operate the slides for me. Thank you, Robin. Okay, and I'll walk you through my very brief presentation, and of course, the applicant is online, and he may want to add a few things if necessary. So, may I please start out by entering the staff report into the record at your, with your permission? So, this is, this annexation file number ANX21-0001 is an annexation regarding a parcel at 700 Northeast Camellia Drive. It's specifically a health hazard relating annexation. And next slide, please, Robin. A little bit of background for you. The subject parcel is a 0.41 acre, which is about 17,859 square feet on the corner of Camellia Drive and Northeast Camellia and Northeast Terrace Drive. The request is to annex into the city limit and change the zoning designation from Yamhill County Very Low Density Residential 1 to this corresponding city of Newburgh zoning district R1 Low Density Residential. The is within the urban growth boundary, and the comprehensive plan district designation is Low Density Residential. Slide, please. Here's a couple of location maps for you. The one on the left is a smaller scale. As you can see, the general location on the north, the very north end of the city. On the left is a larger scale. You can see the subject property as well as the corresponding right of way in front of the subject property along Camellia Drive that is also subject to this annexation. To the left is the city limits, and directly to the left or west on this image is the Terra Estates Phase 1 subdivision. And you can see the subject property on the right in the red box. Next slide, please. Here is the comprehensive plan map designation. Little arrow points to the subject property. And again, that is Low Density Residential Comp Plan designation as indicated on that graphic. Next slide, please. Here is the tax map illustrating that the same subject property with the red star on it. You can see that Lot 600 on the corner of Northeast Camellia and Northeast Terrace. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the Chahalem Terrace subdivision that was filed in July of, in 50s, I'm covered up with my images there, so it was filed in July of 1950s, and you can see the, that was Lot 2 way back in the day on that image with the orange colored star when it was first platted. Next slide, please. Here is an image of our existing utilities. The blue lines are our water lines, and the green is the sewer. So, the subject property is already served with a community water source. And of course, the gist of this request is annexation of the subject property and that corresponding right of way to the north of the property of Northeast Camellia Drive, so they can hook up to city sewer to alleviate a failing onsite septic system. Next slide, please. Quickly going through the criteria. The conditions met, that is, the site is within the urban growth boundary and contiguous to the existing city limits. The property is, of course, located in the UGB along its eastern boundary. And the description of the area to be annexed includes, of course, the subject property and that right of way as Camellia, Northeast Camellia Drive, as I've previously mentioned. Next slide, please. So, our proposed use complies with the comprehensive plan designation on our map, and that the comprehensive plan designation Low Density Residential corresponds to the requested zoning district of R1 Low Density Residential per Newburgh Municipal Code 15250.080. Next slide, please. So, part of this quasi judicial annexation is that there's an adequate level of urban services available. So, we have availability, of course, of police, fire, parks, and school services. Again, the city water service. Community Water Service and City Water Service are adjacent to the property. And one of the conditions of approval is that upon the city manager's request, the subject property will have to connect to the city water. And of course, the city sanitary line, as you've seen, sanitary sewer line, as you've seen, is adjacent to the property along Northeast Terrace Drive. And it will be extended to the subject property at their, at the owner's request. And we require a non remonstrance agreement for the future street improvements along Northeast Terrace Drive and Northeast Camellia Drive adjacent to the subject property. And of course, police, fire, parks, and school are all available to serve this this property. Next slide, please. Here are our proposed conditions of approval. They're also in your packet, so the first condition of approval is related, related to the rights of way dedication along Northeast Terrace Drive and Northeast Camellia Drive. So, the condition reads as, prior to applying for connection to the, the city's sanitary sewer system, the owner must dedicate additional rights of way along the property's frontages sufficient to provide for a 28 feet of right of way from the road center line towards the subject property. The other condition of approval is a non remonstrance agreement must be recorded for the public improvement, covering the public, future public improvements along Northeast Terrace Drive and Northeast Camellia Drive prior to applying for connection to the city's sanitary sewer system. And you can see the details there for what the non remonstrance agreement needs to cover in the future potential public improvements. And the final one is the connection to the city water supply. This comes from our municipal code section 13.15.030 that the applicant will be required to connect to the city water supply within 180 days of formal notice by the city manager. Next slide, please. And here's our recommendation. So, staff recommends that you, we move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2021-369, which recommends that the city council approve the requested annexation of a 0.41 acre parcel and 9,000 square feet of segment of Camellia Drive right of way into the city limits and change the zoning from Yamhill County Very Low Density Residential 1 to Newburgh R1 Low Density Residential. Certain conditions of approval specified in the city council adopting ordinance. And, Mr. Chair, that's my last slide. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant may have a few words to add as well.
Thank you for the report. Is the applicant online? Would you like to add a few words?
Certainly would. I'm Dan Denisich with Yamhill Land Development Services, representing the property owner Doug Peterson.
Yeah, I'm here also.
And I'd like to thank Patrick for his help on getting the application put together and through to this point. He's been very instrumental in making sure we got all of our bits and pieces for a successful application. We appreciate the work of the staff. We have no concerns or objections to the proposed conditions and would certainly support the recommendations for approval and hope that you do some as well. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any opposing persons that would like to make a statement? Hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any questions from commissioners for our persons? Our proponents?
Chairman, I have a question. As I mentioned earlier, I looked at Google to find where this property was. And, and you know, what I discovered was the address that was provided, the 700 Northeast Camellia Drive, doesn't exist. The, you know, the property we're talking about actually has another address. So, we, and it's
I have the answer to that.
Northeast Terrace Drive. So, maybe we need to make a change that, because that seems to be the official address of the property.
So, I have an explanation for that, and it's a, it's almost comical. The mailbox was down on Terrace, and my wife would like the mailbox to be closer to the house, so she called the county and said, can we have the address on Camellia? And they said, for $35, yes, you can have the address on Camellia. So, that's, that's how we got there. We want the mailbox closer to the front door.
This is one of those situations, Commissioner, where the county, since they are in the county, the county controls the addressing, and it takes some time to go through the system at the county to go from the county planning and development department over to the county assessor's office, so that we get a new parcel base with addresses that show up as correct. So, Mr. Peterson is correct. The county, in this case, does control the addressing of the site. Until it's annexed.
Correct.
Then we control the addressing of the site, which will remain a 700 Northeast Camellia.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Are there any other questions?
Planning Commissioner Wright, it states that your septic is failing. Can you state for the record how it's failing? Do you have a, what kind of sewage system do you have?
Want me to take that, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
I had American Onsite come out. We bought the property. We bought it as is, knowing that it had a septic, it was, it was a concrete tank that was cracked. And then the leach lines had years and years of intrusion. So, I had American Onsite come out, and I also had La Rudin Sons and Salem come out. Both of them indicated that the leach lines were completely non-functional, and the tank itself was non-functional. And they indicated that because of the number of bedrooms, there's five bedrooms in the house, that the way the house is situated on the property, that the leach lines would not work. At this time, they, they suggested we would go with a pump station. It was really expensive to try and locate it somewhere else. So, that's when I reached out to Dan to, and they both, actually, both the contractors said, you know, it would be a lot easier if you just annexed into the city and hooked up to the sewer. And that's, that's how the whole conversation started.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to close the public testimony. Are there any further comments from staff?
No, sir. Mr. Chair, I don't have any.
Okay, so let's open it up for deliberation between commissioners. Any commissioners have any comments they'd like to add, or? Hearing none. Yeah, I'd just like to add, it seems like a pretty cut and dried proposal that's a win for the city and a win for the homeowner, so fairly, fairly easy choice for the commissioners, so. If there's nothing further, we'll quote deliberation and ask if there is a motion for consideration.
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to adopt Resolution 2021-369 Exhibits A, B, C, D, and with attachments 1, 2, 3. Do I need to state all of it, including annex, recommending to city council approval of annexation of 0.41 acres of property plus 9,000 square feet of right of way of Camellia Drive adjacent to the subject property into the city of Newburgh and changing the zoning from Yamhill County Very Low Density Dash 1 to Newburgh R1 for property located at 700 Northeast Camellia Drive Tax Lot R3207AA00600. There you go.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Is there a second for the proposal?
I'll second it.
Hey, so we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Cherry.
Yes.
Charles Abon.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes as noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. It looks like next up is a legislative public hearing. And the first one is on a resolution recommending city council amend the 2017 Water Master Plan incorporating the Ed Indem Riverfront Master Plan 2021 into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. So, on this one, we'd like to again announce purpose, and we'll offer public testimony and for proponents and opponents, and I'd like to call for any abstentions, conflicts to main interests, or objections to jurisdiction. Hearing on, hearing none, we'll move on, and are we ready for the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robin, PowerPoint, please. So, I'm going to do my best this evening to not make minced meat out of Heidi's presentation. So, Heidi Springer is with us tonight. She's the consultant of record that is working with the engineering department to update our water master plan. So, she's here to correct me when I'm wrong, and also to answer your questions that I cannot answer. Brett Music is also with us tonight, our senior engineer, and as I noted, engineering is the one who is leading this particular update. So, the 2017 Water Master Plan was adopted. What we're doing is the amendment for the Riverfront Master Plan. So, this is consistent with what we've done in the past. We've already done the transportation. Before that, we did all the land use regulations, and so we have two items on your agenda this evening to continue the implementation components of the Riverfront Master Plan. Next slide. So, in this presentation, we're going to go through what the, the goals of this particular project were, the process for doing the analysis. We're going to talk about the demand for water, and primarily, that relates to the Riverfront Master Plan. I'm going to talk about water service and what makes it good, the results of the analysis that Heidi had conducted, and then we're going to be looking at the recommended capital improvements, but we are not going to the point of actually identify, we're listing projects that would be CIP eligible. We're not specifically addressing the CIP components, those particular costs. Next slide. So, for these goals, Riverfront Master Plan, we've been working on this for several years now. We're getting closer to completing all of the implementation components of that. As part of this, we had to look at House Bill 2001, so that's the one for our middle housing component that the legislature adopted in 2019. And so, we engaged to analyze the areas south of downtown Newburgh. And as we presented to you in previous presentations, we had a fire flow issue, and that in part is due to undersized pipes that are in that area. The engineering department also was working on a seismic resiliency program, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that. And I mentioned the SDC charges. The city council is looking at SDCs, and they're going to be starting a conversation on April 19th about all of our SDCs, transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. And so, we chose in all of these functional plan updates to not specifically address the SDC amounts until the city council has those conversations. And as we've talked about in many briefings over 2020 and into 2021, is about our urban renewal program. And then, again, this directly relates to the Riverfront Master Plan area. Next slide. So, this is the graphic of the Riverfront Master Plan area. It's about 460 acres in size. There is very limited water lines in this area, so when you think of it this way, north of the bypass, we have water line infrastructure to some degree. South of the bypass, we don't have hardly anything, other than from our water treatment plant, we have a pipe that runs directly north and then comes up to 11th Street and Wynouski Street. So, as part of this project, again, if we go back to November of 26, well, 2016, when the council adopted all of the land use regulations, we had included from the Riverfront Master Plan an analysis that was done about what the future water needs would be in this particular area. So, this takes it from a very high level from a master plan. We're starting to refine it down to our functional plans. And then, we're looking at the, the water demand that would come from development, future development that would occur within the Riverfront area. Next slide. Middle housing. So, for this particular component of it, we were looking at the fact that a lot of our south Newburgh area, which includes some of the riverfront area, predominantly detached single-family homes, but with the middle housing component, and it's changing that, and says, anywhere where you allow a detached single-family home, you now must require to allow a duplex. And then, we have other middle housing, triplexes, quads, cottage clusters, and townhome development. And so, we needed to analyze this area in the south part of downtown and down into the riverfront area, and that higher density requires a higher fire flow. And so, as part of the work that Heidi had done is that we identified, or they identified, that is, that we had some deficiencies. Next slide. On the seismic resiliency component of it, you've probably heard a lot about the Cascadia Subduction Zone, so someday, we're going to have the Great Quake. So, they were HDR consultant of that, for that particular project, was evaluating it about from our system overall, a lot of it was looking at our water treatment plant and issues that might arise from that. Remember, our well field is on the south side of the Willamette River, and we have two pipes. We have one that goes under the river, and we have one, a pipe that hangs off the waterline bridge. So, our water source is on the other side of the river, and there's a potential that those water lines could be disrupted sometime in the future. And then, you get into the distribution system on the north side of the river, because it goes from the water treatment plants, it goes to our reservoirs. We have Corral Creek and the North Valley Reservoirs, and so we pump the water up to those reservoirs, and then the water gravity's backed out in the system to serve the community. And so, we have aging portions of our water system overall. And so we have aging portions of our water system overall. And so there was an evaluation that was done to look at what needed to be done to de- diminish or decrease our our potential for critical infrastructure failure. Next slide. Heidi, am I doing okay so far? Then, so part of this analysis, they looked at the water demand. And so we started with the plan from 2017. We looked at the riverfront development and what would be occurring there. We factored in the middle housing components that are in process now, which will be coming to you at your meeting in May. We for criterias, what our adequate water service was, and then what's changed since 2017? And then that all gets us down to the capacity modeling. And so that hydraulic model and looking at that system, and then where do we have deficiencies in our system overall? Next slide. So here is the graphic of the riverfront master plan. So that area again goes from Ninth Street, it goes south to the river over to Wynewski and then follows down along Shahealan Creek. And you can see we have industrial, we have mixed employment, we have high density, medium density and commercial areas. And then north of the bypass, by and large, we have a mix of detached, single family and multifamily housing products. Next slide. So this graphic is representing where we're at. So the average daily demand, which is the ADDs, a million gallons a day in 2019 was 2.7. And 20 years, it was projected through the modeling to be 3.89. We add in the riverfront is 0.17, which is relatively a small amount. And that gives us a a look 20 years into that future of 4.06. And so you can see that some of the details that are there. Next slide, please. So this is a graphic of the system itself or a graphic of a system. It's probably a better way to put that. And so we always have to look at our operational fire flow and that emergency, we have certain volumes that we have to maintain in our particular reservoirs. And then we've got areas that this graphic shows as higher pressures and lower pressures. And Heidi always mentions that Newburgh has a pretty high pressure system. The minimum for fire flow is 20 pounds per square inch, which is PSI. And next slide. So this is a map that identifies where as part of this fire flow analysis of the area south of downtown. And so we've got dead end mains that exist. We've got undersized pipes that exist. And so in the smaller grid, we can't, as the notes say, we can't get to the 2,000 gallons per minute in the fire flow. And so we've got this fire flow deficiency issue. And this kind of generally applies a little bit to the area south of Ninth Street that was evaluated. But a lot of that was to the area to the north of Ninth Street. Next slide. So there's about two miles of new mains that are identified that are necessary to serve the riverfront area. And those include eight inch and 12 inch. And so you can see like the RMP2, that's a 12 inch line that comes from down near our water treatment plant, which is the bottom of the slide, the bottom right hand side. Then there's a 12 inch pipe that runs up River Street, but then you start to go down to the eight inch pipes as you go to the left or would be to the west of River Street. There's also looping the system through the existing mill site. And that's tying off of our 16 inch line and going back to the east of Wynewski Street. And tying that system together. And so as we've talked in the urban renewal program and had conversations with Walton Valley Fire and Rescue is, you know, looping this system is very important. You can see some of the the narrower blue lines that these red lines would connect into, which would acquire those loops. And part of this system would be lines that would go underneath the Newburgh Dundee bypass. The cost of these improvements are about $4.5 million. Next slide. This gets in a little more detail about the middle housing component of that. And so there's about 2.9 miles of lines that need to be replaced. There are four inch and six inch lines. And those get replaced with eight inch and 12 inch lines. And so that's about a and and current dollar values, that's about $6.6 million to do those particular upgrades. Next slide. These are the seismic improvements. And so at the top of this slide, you know, about $8.5 million to address issues about stabilizing the shoreline. Many of you, probably none of you have been out to our water treatment plant, but we are right at the top of the bluff on the Willamette River, which has a sharp bend. So there is erosion that occurs. So there's some stabilization there. And then size the upgrading the water treatment plant itself. There's some emergency controls and valves and so forth. That's about 500,000. There are some improvements, seismic improvements of North Valley reservoirs or reservoir. We've already done one. And that's a little over a million dollars. And then there's these older cast iron and concrete pipes within our system. And those need to be upgraded and replaced as well. And that's about 1.5 million. There's some planning costs and you can see the details. I won't go through those. But this total cost comes to about $11.8 million for the seismic resiliency in in current dollars. Next slide. So findings in your staff report, there are findings. I, as always, if Patrick started up, let's enter the staff report into the record so that we have that officially. But we've addressed all of the planning goals and determined that this proposal meets those goals. We've evaluated against our comprehensive plan, goals and policies. And staff has determined it meets those. We've also evaluated against Oregon revised statutes, administrative rules. The primary one there is public facilities planning. And then this process is a type four, which is a legislative proceeding process where the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council who will make the final decision. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution 2021, three, 65. Next slide. After the planning commission hearing, and if you come to a resolution tonight for a recommendation, we will be on to the city council on May 3 for their public hearing. Mr. Chair, that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rux. Is there anyone that would like to offer public testimony? Anyone online that would like to make comments?
I need, I need, did I do okay?
I was gonna say, you did an excellent job. I am, I am deeply flattered that you listened so carefully to that presentation at the council work session a few days ago that you were able to repeat it.
I just like that. We've been looking at this particular project for, I don't know how long now. It's been several iterations and there's been lots of input and I think this looks like about about right. I mean, I don't see how you could hardly do much better. So kudos.
Absolutely.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, so then let's close public testimony or comments and then open it up for commissioners.
Commissioner Wright. I'm on page one of 420. So anyway, I'll just say it. It says to adopt resolution 2023, 66. But you, but on the other one, it says 365.
Oh, did I make a typo error? It's always possible, Commissioner. It's 365.
Okay.
Ah, yeah, 365.
All right. Thank you. That was it.
Anything else from commissioners? Any further comments from staff? Okay, hearing none. If we can move on, is there anyone to propose anything on the resolution?
Planning Commissioner Wright. I move to um, is it adopt or approve? Which term do we use here? Is it adopt?
It would be adopt resolution number.
Resolution number 2020 dash three, 65 recommending that City Council incorporate the addendum. No, City Council amend the 2017 Water Master Plan incorporating the Addendum Riverfront Master Plan 2021 into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan with Exhibits A, B, C. And I think that was it. And there's in the other planning commission agenda item report, there is also an attachment called CPA. I think it's the same. It says CPTA 20 dash 004, though. Report wastewater with exhibits.
Well, we're just dealing with the water. So all you have to do is adopt the resolution 365.
Okay. Duly noted.
I second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion to adopt the resolution and we have a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles A. Bond.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musaw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to close that legislative hearing and move on to the next one. And again, it's a public hearing to look at a resolution recommending the City Council amend the 2018 Wastewater Management Plan incorporating the 2021 Riverfront at Indem into the newer comprehensive plans. I'd like to call for any abstentions, conflict of interest or objections to jurisdiction on this one. Hearing none, and we'd like to also comment that we will open public testimony for anyone present that would like to make comments. And that will come after the staff report. And at this time, let's open it up for the staff report.
All right, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this is the second, well, actually it would be the third in our series of functional plans. So you've already addressed the transportation. You just addressed the water. So now we're moving on to our wastewater. Next slide. So on this particular one, through this presentation, we're going to give you some information on the background, a little bit of an overview. We're going to talk about some of the system updates, the evaluation process, alternatives that were recommended. And this is addressing the Springbrook Basin itself. So this not only deals with just the riverfront master plan area, but the Springbrook Basin based upon direction that were provided by our engineering department. Then we're going to talk about improvements that are recommended. And as we did with the water master plan just a moment ago is that there is a list of CIP or capital improvement programs, but not specific cost as council will be addressing the issue about SDCs. And so we would come back on our transportation, our water and our wastewater. And then you have one more, but we're going to go through at your meeting in May, and that's on the stormwater. And likely we may be back in the fall of 2021, potentially looking at CIP issues. Next slide. So as I've already mentioned, the big driver in this is the riverfront master plan. So we have to deal with wastewater. What I always, I always call it pipes in and pipes out. So as this evening, we have again Brett Music is with us and then Emily Flock is with us, the consultant engineering record for this particular project and evaluation. The goals, again, looking at the riverfront master plan, more development that's occurring down there. And then as we did with the water, we had to look at the IBTR, we call it the acronym. Don't like the acronym, but it is what it is. So that's the infrastructure based time extension request. Next slide. So overview, so the IBTER, again, we were looking at the areas south of downtown and north of downtown. For the wastewater system, we did not have any issues. The only issue we found looking at our four functional plans was the one addressing water, transportation, wastewater and stormwater. We're okay. Then we had the riverfront master plan as Commissioner Dale had mentioned, we've actually been working on that since 2016. So we continue, these things never happen quickly, folks. They take time to go through all of the various processes. Then our consultant team looked at this in the way of looking at thresholds, we had to take into consider the river run subdivision, which is off of Weatherly Way, which is north of the bypass. As I mentioned, that Springbrook Basin. So think of that East Crestview Drive, Crest, Crestview Crossing location. If any of you have ever been down Crestview Drive, East Crestview Drive, it's a gravel road. And that's all changing because Brett has a project out there. We're approving that road to a major collector standard. Keller then went through and looked at evaluation, different alternatives, and of course, the CIP. And there have been presentations. Engineering was operating with a citizens advisory committee. I didn't mention this on the water side. But they were looking at the water, the wastewater and the stormwater. In this case, the citizens advisory committee met three times. And I've also given the planning commission some briefings as we move forward through the process. Next slide. So system updates. So Emily looks at this, we look at the entirety of the urban growth boundary. In this case, we're focusing on the riverfront and the Springbrook Basin. And so the Springbrook Basin would be that area around Crestview Drive, which is over towards the top right of the particular slide. Next, next slide. Here specifically the riverfront area. So you can see the boundaries that are more in the the purple color, I will call it. Evaluation process went through and looked at there's about approximately 260 dwelling units that can occur in there. You can see the blue and the red. So the blue would be for industrial development. The lighter blue would be for the mixed commercial and or industrial development. The red is for commercial and then the big green areas and different colors are all the parks and open spaces that are identified. And so there's a legend in the key at the bottom of that map that helps explain all of that. Next slide. In the Crestview area, we have Crestview Crossing, which is currently under construction. It's about a 32 acre development. As I mentioned, Brett is managing a project for improvements to Crestview Drive. Basically, it goes from the city limit line back to the west towards Springbrook Road. And then part of Crestview will be development will be building Crestview Drive from Highway 99 up to the city limit line. Next slide. Criteria. So in this one, Emily's here, she can get into the details, but there is modeling criteria. So they're looking at five year 24 hour storm events. You see on the slide here that we're talking about, you know, 2.9 inches of rain in a 24 hour period. We haven't had a rainstorm quite like that. I think the last time I can remember something that might be similar would be 1996, when we had the big floods that occurred in the Willamette Valley. Don't know if those inches of rain are actually equitable, but they probably relatively close. Then they looked at the thresholds for the options to be considered. We had conversations early on with the CAC about the flow in the pipe itself. And when we did the update to the plan originally, we went with one foot. And so we went through and had that conversation with the current CAC and they came back with the same particular recommendation. Peak flow 85% and pump stations looking Peak flow 85% and pump stations looking at those particular evaluations. Next slide. These, this is a map that models the different basins. So you can see that in Newburgh, we essentially have three basins. The yellow is on the left-hand side, the blues down the Hess Creek. And over on your far side is the Springbrook, but it also has the Fernwood Pump Station. So if you were down by the golf course, there is a lift station down there with a force main that goes underneath Fernwood Road. Next slide. This is a map that's identifying improvements. The areas to pay attention to are those that are highlighted. So area F and area L. And so the riverfront district is in that area F. There's a lot of things, this map has a lot of information that it's telling you. And so we already have in our wastewater plan improvements in the Hess Creek Basin. There's some alternative routes for some piping that would occur. But part of this was looking at the Springbrook Basin and how we might be able to potentially split flows and redirect flows. And so that's why you see the highlighted area in L, which is the Fernwood Pump Station. Next slide. So the alternatives. So Keller went through and looked at alternative one, which is improvements upsizing pipes in Springbrook Road, eating down to Second Street. And then there's a parallel gravity line that would go near the airport, not in the runway, Jason, but to the east of the runway. And go down into the Hess Creek Basin, which take you to the headworks. This. So you can see in the list here, the improvements, a small portion of Crestview, upsizing the Fernwood Pump Station. And so Emily, when she gave the presentation to council, there's a, there's a cost implication to upgrade that lift station. And then that parallel line that I was talking about. Next slide. The other alternative was if you start all the way up at Crestview Drive is a line that goes down through the subdivisions there that you can kind of see in the the lighter blue color, there's still improvements within Springbrook Road than the parallel line that takes you down into Hess Creek. So there's some upsizing of pipes in the boulevard section or area upsizing lines from Fernwood to Hayes Street. And then that new parallel pipe that runs down Second and along the Sportsman's Air Park. Next slide. Emily provided information to the council, just talking about the life cycle of this. And so you can see the different alternatives or between alternative one and alternative two. And I'll let Emily speak to the specifics if you have any questions on that. And so they recommended alternative one. And you can see it's 5.7 million versus the $7 million price tag. Next slide. And they also looked at some improvements in evaluation along River Street. And so it's undersized for peak flows. Could look at a parallel component to that. There, we have been working on an I and I reduction program. So that's inflow and infiltration that occurs in our sanitary sewer system. We have two separate systems. We have a wastewater system and we have a stormwater system. But we do have older and aging pipes. And again, you get back to the area that's south of downtown, which is some of the older neighborhoods and early development in the community. And I think Brett didn't Karen say we've reduced the I and I about 39% with the projects we've been doing over the last four or five years or so.
Yeah, we've reduced the I and I flows into the wastewater treatment plant to that about 39%. We're about 50% of the way through the various I and I projects we're in the previous master plan and I study.
And so that helps because that reduces our operational costs at the wastewater treatment plant because we don't want to treat those high flows in the winter time when the water table rises and we have infiltration occurring into the pipes. Next slide. Within the riverfront area specifically, now looking at that infrastructure and you can see the areas that are circled in red. And so on your right-hand side, there's a wastewater line that comes into the mill site. There's some upsizing in or wastewater line modifications, improvements in River Street along 14th Street, again, pipes going and Northeast Waterfront. Then pipes going underneath the bypass to get you up towards the River Run subdivision. And you'll see there's a pump station. So in our existing master plan, we identified decommissioning the Charles and the Andrews Pump Station and building a new pump station. So if you're on Weatherly, you can see a great big water quality facility and adjacent to that we've identified a new pump station. And again, that reduces our operational costs. And there would be a force main that would go back over towards 12th and 13th that would connect into the wastewater system. Next slide. Recommended improvements up in the Crestview area. And you can see those. And so with the Crestview Crossing project, they are installing a wastewater system now that goes through that development and goes underneath 99 down to Clement and then goes into the Fernwood Pump Station. Next slide. This, I'm not going to get into this table. There's a lot of detail, but these are the CIP projects that have been identified and potential costs. But again, we're not going into the component of the master plan, looking at adjusting our SDC rates to address this until the city council has their conversation on system development charges. Next slide. Priority improvements. And so these are the priority ones. By administrative rule, we have to break these into priorities. And so this lists those priorities out. And you can see the potential years and what those potential costs would be. The total overall cost is in that priority one is a little over $20 million. Next slide. This is a graphic of the capital improvement projects. And so for the focus down on the riverfront, you can see the lines that are in blue and in purple. Up in the Crestview area, you can see the lines that are more of a yellow color. The other projects by and large that you see going down Hess Creek and up off of Main Street and Shaillam Drive are already within our wastewater master plan. Next slide. Findings, staff did an evaluation of the information against the statewide planning goals and concluded that we were in compliance. Again, with our comprehensive plan and policies that we were in compliance with revised statutes and administrative rules that were in compliance. And then we're going through the type four hearing procedure process, which is legislative. So that meets another provision of our, our development code. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution 2021-366. Next slide. Next steps, we take any feedback that you have from this hearing and make any necessary adjustments. Then we're on to the city council for a public hearing on May 3rd, 2021. So Emily, did I catch most everything?
You did excellent, Doug. Thank you.
So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity again to again, open for public testimony. If there are any proponents, opponents, or comments from public in the room. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public testimony and open it up for deliberation by commissioners. Commissioners with comments or questions, go ahead.
Planning Commissioner Wright. Considering one of the sewage water lines are along that bluff in the riverfront district and the seismic issues coming up, was there any seismic adjustments or reinforcements potential to that line? That would be going on the bluff above the park and recreations property?
I will turn that over to Emily and Peter.
There were not seismic adjustments made in the scope of this technical update. And that's something that would typically come in sort of your pre-design phase of that project and evaluating it at that time.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was any forethought on that. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything?
Oh, what are the, I know it was talked about recently in another meeting about the DEQ potential for the is that the wastewater treatment plan or the ponds?
So the, so we've, in this particular, in our functional plan proposals, we've received comments from the Department of State Lands about wetlands. And by and large, where the wastewater lines would go, they are in existing rights of way. So that's not an issue. Now, there is the pump station that goes down through Ewing Young Park and decommissioning the Charles and the Andrews Pump Station. And so when engineering gets to the point of actually designing a project, they will have to go through the process of delineating wetlands. And if there are wetlands present, then they would have to go through the appropriate mitigation process. Same thing happened on the water, same things happening on transportation. DSL has asked us to do a local wetland inventory for the entire community. As I mentioned, when we were talking about the transportation system plan update, the city does not have the financial capacity to take our 5.9 square miles and do a detailed local wetland inventory. Unless the Department of State Lands would like to provide us a grant to do all of that analysis. And at this point, they do not have the financial capability to do that either.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I have no further questions. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Commissioner Wright. Do any, are there any other commissioners have any questions for staff or any comments? Well, hearing none, let's move on. And would anyone like to make a proposal on the resolution?
Commissioner Capri, and I move that we accept the plan proposal 2021-366.
I second the motion.
We have a motion to adopt and we have a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and the resolution pass is adopted as proposed.
Thank you, Emily and Peter. Emily, you get to give the presentation at council. I'm done. I'm tired.
I second that, Doug.
Thank you for your time.
I do have inquiry on the very last page, the 1,438. It has resolution 2021-3686. And I know that eight's not supposed to be in there.
Originally, there was a resolution that was adopted by the city council that initiated the amendment process.
So that's where the eight comes from at the end.
Yes, different numbering system between city council and planning commission.
And us, okay. That clarified that. I thought it might be a typo. Good deal. Now I know. Thank you. Good to know there's different codes for different divisions, too. Did not know that. Thank you.
Council works under a four-digit system. We work under a three.
Okay.
Age is cooler.
Great, good deal.
Okay, at this point, it looks like we're on to new business and it looks like we have a vertical housing development zone report from staff.
Thank you. If we could get the slideshow, I'll start my little presentation here. So my name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the city of Newburgh. I would like to enter in my staff report and the findings within that staff report into the public record. This is a general file. It's not a land use decision. So what we're looking for is a recommendation via resolution to the city council. And you've heard this before, we talked about it. So next slide. So where does the vertical housing development zone idea come from? The city of Newburgh did a downtown improvement plan in 2016. It's a very good plan. If you haven't read it, you should. It talks about some great improvements in the downtown. One of those improvements is, is you know, developing more mass in the downtown, more, more residences and more and more businesses. And on pages 54 and 55, there are a number of recommendations, different economic development tools. And one of those economic development tools is the vertical housing development zone. Next slide, please. So what is it? It was created by a state statute, used to be managed by the state. It's now been turned over to the local units of government. It enables cities and counties to come to an agreement with the various taxing districts or jurisdictions for a 10-year partial property tax exemption. It's only 10 years, can't be extended. And then vertical housing zone can be either a single lot or a collection of lots. In our case, what we chose is the property within our downtown area, the property of Zone C3 and currently M2. Next slide, please. Why support a vertical housing development zone program? Well, it's our central business district. This is where we want to have a lot of great development, you know, things to draw people out. These mixed-use developments are great. They attract people to live in our downtown area. And then those, those people living in our downtown area, there's a spin-off effect. The businesses are supported. They can walk out, out their front door and they can go shopping and they can go get a meal. And the other thing, these, these larger mixed-use buildings do increases the surrounding property values for the existing properties and, and the county tax base as a whole, more opportunities to live and work in our downtown. And increasing the number of residents is very important to the businesses. We want a healthy downtown. And it, these mixed-use buildings, they're larger, they, they tend to create more long-term health, economic health. And especially after year 10, that's where kind of the kicker comes. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And last, lastly, walkable neighborhoods. We want people to be walking rather than just driving around their car all the time. So this is, is something to bring more people into our downtown and support our businesses and make our downtown a lively place. Next slide, please. So the partial tax abatement, it's, it's available for, in this case, I'll be talking about market rate units. First floor has to be commercial, at least 50% of the road frontage on the main road has to be commercial. The first floor is fully taxed. The taxing districts get all the money from, from first floor. The partial tax exemption is only for the residential floors above the first floor and it's, it's broken out into one-story residential, but commercial is 20%, two floors, 40%, three floors, 60%, and a maximum of 80% for four floors. Next slide, please. There's also the ability to have an affordable project, affordable housing project. The abatement would be for the land and so the building, well, along with building. So you would have kind of not only the abatement for the building, but also for the land, it's an affordable housing project. And it's, it's the same 10-year temporary abatement, one floor, 20%, two floors, 40s, all the way up to four floors at 80% maximum. Next slide, please. And here's the boundary. So to the north. And here's the boundary. So to the north, you have Sheridan Street, then you kind of goes over to the west, the railroad tracks. Goes down to the frontage along First Street, then down to the frontage lots along Second Street. The eastern boundary would be River Street, then it goes back up to the College GFU area. And then it cuts in and catches catches most of the frontage along Hancock Street, and then we're back up to Sheridan. Next slide, please. The consultants, Leland, Leland did a kind of a assessment of the development potential within our downtown. So they created a tiered system. Tier one is the most developable properties, and tier three would be the least developable properties. So there was 13 total sites, the ones in purple, number eight. So there's eight highly developable sites or more developable, and then there's less as we go down that that tiered system. Next slide, please. So Leland also did displacement analysis. This is a requirement of the state revised statute. Briefly, their analysis determined that there was a very little likelihood that the vertical housing development zone would stand any chance of displacing residents. Next slide, please. We also had to do a model. So the building that we chose is is actually an existence. Existence, I'm going to shoot down my screen so I can read some things. And this is, in fact, a mixed-use building. You have commercial on the first floor, and you have residential on the second. Next slide, please. We had to make some assumptions. So with our assumptions, we were starting with brand-new construction. We did utilize the 2019 real market value, and that's about $1.6 million for that property, that building. And then the land value is about $270,000. And what we're doing for this model is saying, well, with the construction of the building, the land value will go up slightly the first year, $2,000. We had to have that just to figure out how the taxes were going to play out. And the model is based on market rate units. We're going to assume a 3% annual increase in assessed value. And then Yamhill County does not differentiate between commercial and residential use. So what we did, we took that $1.6 million, and we split it in half between the floors. That's basically what Yamhill County does to assess mixed-use buildings. Next slide, please. So here's our model. This is specifically for the city of Newburgh and and the taxes that we would we would normally get. So even with the abatement, we'd still get about $32,000. The total abatement over years 1 through 10 is about $6,000. And then estimated tax collected for the kicker years would be a little over $53,000. A three-story model, here we are at 40% temporary tax abatement. $36,000 being collected with the abatement. Estimated tax, total tax, or I'm sorry, estimated tax collected with the abatement for years 1 through 10 is $36,000. And then the baited tax is about $20,000. That's what the city would be giving up. Then estimated tax collected for years 11 through 20, again, we have the kicker years, and that's $76,000. Next slide, please. So we also looked at a four-story model, $32,000 for the tax collected with abatement. Estimated abated tax would be about $40,000, and then for years 11 through 20, the city would be collecting about $99,000 on that building. Five-story building, here we are at the maximum partial tax, temporary tax abatement. So the tax collected for with the abatement for years 1 through 10 would still be about $22,000. Estimated tax abated for those years would be $67,000. And then the kicker years, the city would see about $121,000 in taxes come in that maybe in a building that wouldn't have been built without some sort of incentive. Next slide, please. We also looked at the overall benefit for developer. This is what a developer would get. So for the number of floors, for all the taxing jurisdictions or districts, they'll be giving up $39,000 for a two-story, be about $119,000. A three-story, I'm sorry, three floors residential, it would be actually a four-story building with three floors residential, $238,000, and four stories of residential. Over that years, 1 through 10, would be about $397,000 for the incentive for the developer to construct within the building within our downtown. Next, next slide, please. So we met with all the taxing districts. We did a series of presentations. Prior to asking for a decision, we sent out the opt-in, opt-out letter. And over about a month, we had all the taxing districts say yes. They approved it. Yay! So we do, we'll eventually have this economic development tool hopefully in in place. The city council will be the last stop. Next slide. So here we are, it's April 8th, we're at the planning commission. We're going to ask you for a recommendation via resolution, and then May 17th, we'll be at the city council meeting for our first reading. And then June 7th, we'll be there for our second reading if if needed. So that that concludes my presentation. We did look at the criteria in the Oregon revised statutes. Basically, notification requirements, we went about that. City council will have 60 days after the termination by the taxing district. So we'll be well within at least that 60-day period, be more than 60 days. So that's it. Hopefully, we'll get a good resolution, recommendation via your resolution, and and we'll be off off to the races to get an economic development tool here in downtown to maybe get some really cool buildings and some cool uses.
Well, thank you. At this time, and just in case there is anyone that'd like to give the opportunity for public testimony, if there's anyone that's either for or against the resolution. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public testimony and move on to questions or comments from commissioners. And I do have a question. It's more of a just curiosity question. As far as the abatement, the tax abatement, it is graduated with the floors, you know, it goes up with the floors. I'm just curious, after the abatement, is there a differentiation in the tax rate for floors, or is it just taxed as a as a building regardless of floors at that point?
No, it would be taxed as as a building. So and with the Yamhill County, they don't differentiate between the uses within these these mixed-use buildings, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Any other commissioners have questions or comments?
Oh, yes, plain commissioner, right? According to the IRS tax code, lease is, would the residential be considered leases, hold improvements that have a 15-year depreciation value with the commercial building or now with the the bottom floor only being commercial and the rest residential, the commercial building can be depreciated for 39 years? Or do they attack that from like a developer standpoint for cost segregation? Do you know?
No.
Commissioner, no. By the Oregon system, we're following what the statute says, and you are looking at Internal Revenue Service Code and depreciation issues. And so we're not required to look at all of that. The investor may look at that as part of their financing package in the total pro forma for the development of that particular proposal, but we're not required to look at it.
Yamhill County just considers it a commercial building, though?
Yes.
Awesome, because that would give developers a lot longer time to appreciate over time. That was something I was wondering. And then the other thing I was wondering, since you do have four and five stories on some of those graphics, is the city considering allowing four and five stories or a larger cap on the buildings?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say is that our height limitations are regulated by the airport. And so in the downtown area, at the very west end, you can build a building of 150 feet in height. You could build a building today of 150 feet in height in the downtown. As part of the downtown improvement plan and based upon community feedback, they had indicated that buildings, you know, in the four-to-five-story height is the maximum they would want to see for the community.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and what you what you do with those is on the commercial part of it, you have to have a podium above it, a concrete podium, then you can go up four stories with a wood structure. That's the way you do it. It's the most economical way of doing it.
Economical, huh? Okay. Nice. Are any designs, do any designs allow that first commercial floor to be like partially submerged? I see designs like that of businesses in Portland and San Francisco. Is that first floor going to be allowed to be like a basement or partially submerged?
I don't think the the state statute talks about something below grade or anything like that. So I don't think that that would be something that, you know, if it's a basement, it's a basement. It's not a first floor.
Yeah, the way the language reads is that 50% of the ground floor of the primary street has to be commercial, so that would be at ground level.
At ground level, okay. All right, all right, thank you again.
Have they thought about how they're going to park these things?
Commissioner, that will be up to the developer to figure out. Here are the requirements. Here's what you have to have on your primary street. So I'll just use as a hypothetical, the city owns a lot across from City Hall. It's about 10,300 square feet. If somebody approached the city hypothetically again, saying, hey, we, you know, we're interested in buying this. Oh, we're interested in the vertical housing development zone, we would say, okay, your primary street is First Street. So 50% of the frontage along First Street has to be commercial. And then if you wanted to build three floors of residential above all of that, then you'd have to look at, oh, do I build a parking garage, underground parking garage? Do I do the back portion of the building as a podium or not? And then we would sit down and talk with them about the other provisions that we have within our code. And some commissioners may remember that we've added another tool to our toolbox about being able to pay for your parking spaces, and we have a charge that's per space. And then we would collect those funds, and we would purchase property to build a surface parking lot. Then we're also working on the urban renewal program, and the act committee has identified funding for two surface parking lots within the downtown area. So we have these different tools, and so we have to sit down with the developer and say, okay, what's your concept? What do you want to do? Oh, these are the things that we have in our toolbox. Do you want to utilize any of those as part of the concept of your development?
I like that scenario.
All right, do any other commissioners have anything that I'd like to add or any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll move on. Would someone like to offer a proposal on the resolution?
Well, I would make a resolution in favor of the vertical housing, but I don't quite know the right things to say to call it.
I'll go for it. Commissioner Wright approves. I mean, not approves, moves to approve resolution number 2019-3529. Or no, sorry, 2021-372 recommending city council approve the vertical housing development zone program for the area defined by the Newburgh Downtown Improvement Plan and DIP and creating MC 3.5 vertical housing development zone, including Exhibits A and B and attachments 1 through 8.
Very good, and I would like to second that.
Very well, we have a motion to approve and adopt, and we have a second. Can we get a roll call vote again, please?
Sure, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Aven.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well, the motion to adopt passes, so very good. And moving on, now we want to look at items from staff. So, Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you have your forward-looking calendar on the last two pages of your 2,138-page package. So coming up at your May meeting, we're going to be bringing forward to you the middle housing duplex provisions. And so you've had a number of briefings on that. That will be a legislative. We'll be bringing forward the stormwater master plan, which I've alluded to earlier. That again will be a legislative hearing. And then the final one will be some amendments to our development code, which is a final piece of implementation of our riverfront master plan. And so that will be legislated. It's important to note and make sure everyone puts on your calendar, June 7th, 6:00 PM. There you will be having another joint session with the city council, where we'll be talking about the middle housing, other middle housing, triplexes, quads, townhomes, and cottage clusters. That will be your last opportunity to provide input on that one. Because that will come back to you likely in November of 2021 for a legislative public hearing. And then on to council in December of 2021. Your June meeting, we've got some quasi-judicial, so it's always a good reminder after we went through training about legislative and quasi-judicial. So in June, we've got three quasi-judicial hearings potentially in front of you, two I think for sure will happen. The last one on the annexations may not, I'm still working on that. I don't have anything for you in August at this point, but I'm sure I can come up with something.
Yeah, plenty of time.
Yep. The other thing that's occurring on this transpired after the agenda went out. We have a process that's called the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. And that body looks at issues related to expansions of urban growth boundaries and/or designations of urban reserve areas. We are anticipating a quasi-judicial application that's coming forward that will go in front of New Mac. New Mac is a combination, it's established through an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Yamhill County. And we have a pending application that would require New Mac to meet. New Mac has not met for 12 years. We haven't had any issues, but we have one that's coming at us. So I have, we are feverishly trying to get our members identified for this potential New Mac meeting. So I'm looking from the commission, who might want to volunteer to serve as a New Mac member? The appointment, which has to be ratified by city council, would be from May 3rd of 2021 through December 31st of 2022. Right now, I'm anticipating a couple of meetings this summer, June, July timeframe, and those meetings are on Tuesday evenings. So don't all jump at once. And another commitment.
What's our timeframe?
So I need to know if anybody's interested this evening on serving on NUMAC.
And is this every Tuesdays evening or once a month or every other week?
It's a, again, it hasn't met for twelve years. It doesn't meet very often. By the bylaws, it's established it meets on a quarterly basis. But again, since we have not met, we're right now, we're looking at some meetings in kind of the June, July kind of timeframe. I'm anticipating that the first meeting would be more of an orientation meeting, probably lasting about an hour. Just everybody meet each other and re-establishing what the bylaws and the protocols and so forth are. And then if we get this application, then we would come back for an official public notice meeting. Operates just like a planning commission meeting. Members of this would be a council member, planning commission member, a resident of Newburgh, a board of commissioner, a planning commissioner member from Yamhill County, and then a citizen representative from Yamhill County.
It could be interesting. I'd be interested in it. I am going to be out of town a bunch of July, but I'd be interested in at least looking at it.
There be, anybody else? If nobody's interested, being the primary, is somebody interested in being the alternative, because I have slots for that, too.
Chris, you would do really great at that.
Well, yeah, you can put me down as interested and an alternative. I've almost got things down to a dull roar.
Hey Doug, how far in advance would you know when meeting dates were?
I should know within the next three weeks or so if we're going to get that application. Then I have the 120-day shot clock that I have to work with. And so once we get an application, then I can set some dates. Originally, I was thinking we might do an orientation in early June and a hearing in late June, but it may be it's mid-June for orientation and early July for a public hearing.
Okay, yeah. Late July, I'm planning on doing some traveling, but late July. So yeah, definitely put me down as interested.
Okay. Anybody else?
I've been a duty.
Well, if there's somebody else who's interested in being an alternative, let me know, because I'll take this to city council, city recorder, and I will, and the city council will discuss it and see.
I could be an alternative, if that would work for you.
Okay. Good, that gives me three. That gives me choices. That gives counsel. And that, Mr. Chair, is all I had under staff items.
Well, thank you. Are there any items from commissioners at this point? Well, hearing none, I'd just like to take a minute to thank staff. There was a lot of information, a lot of things gelled down for our consumption. Appreciate it. And if there's nothing further, then I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the April eighth, 2021, meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Night now.